On August 17th, 2021 to order at 2:00 PM. Would you please join me for a moment of silence? Thank you. We provide an opportunity for the public to address the city council on any item, any agenda item during the, or during the hearing of visitors on the agenda. On items other than public hearings, speakers will be allotted one three-minute presentation regardless of the number of agenda items the speaker wishes to address. If you are here to speak and have not filled out a registration card, please see the city secretary staff at the registration outside the auditorium to provide registration information so that staff can contact you if necessary. If you do have handouts, please let us know at the beginning of your presentation and staff will distribute those to council. If you are unable to approach the podium due to physical limitations, a microphone is available to be brought to you. Is there anyone who would like to present, to speak on a work session agenda item? Ms. Merle, do you know if there's anyone that is speaking on a work session item? No, it's registered, great, thanks. Very good. With that, then we will recess the regular session and convene the work session with the report from the city manager.
Thanks, Mayor and council members. Good afternoon. We don't have any changes to the agenda this afternoon, but I will note that we've placed an updated Resolution 2021-537 at your place, which has our updated COVID-19 numbers included. Meeting this afternoon with a new employee recognition. We have a new employee in the audience today. He's going to stand in a moment. Our new Sustainability Programs Manager, Eric Kaufman, who started with the city yesterday, his second day, he's held positions both in the private sector and nonprofit world focused on sustainability, building performance, energy audits and grants management. We're real excited to have him joining our team. Him and his family have been residents of Waco now for about five years, I believe. And his wife is a history professor at Baylor. He's got a bachelor's degree in civil engineering and a master's in business administration. He's definitely hit the ground running, as you might imagine, meeting with staff on our initiatives and certainly will have the chance to be introduced to the Sustainability Board on, at Thursday's meeting. So Eric, welcome, and we're excited for your work here.
Welcome aboard. This is a subject that this council is very devoted to and really exciting to see the lens that you'll be looking through that can help advise our whole team. So I want to thank staff, city manager's office also for seeing this through. We're excited to have you aboard. Welcome.
And now I'd like to turn the mic to Jennifer for a recognition item as well.
Counsel, I want to introduce y'all to your newest Senior Assistant City Attorney, Kathy Perdon. Kathy joined our office as an Assistant City Attorney in 2010, right after graduating from University of Texas Law School. Kathy has taken on increasingly complicated and challenging legal work since she joined our team. She now serves as the Attorney for Water Utilities, Finance, Office of Management and Budget in Waco Transit. She serves as your attorney for the Budget and Audit Committee. In the past, she has served for the Attorney for Planning and Zoning and several other departments. She also always is up for a challenge for new legal issues or projects. For instance, some of you were here when she spearheaded the legal aspect of turning our municipal court into a court of record, which was kind of a lengthy process and she helped from the legal perspective. And on a more fun note, you may notice that Kathy has a new haircut from Budget and Audit Committee. Yesterday, she and her daughter Maddie donated their long hair to charity and got a great haircut out of it.
Congratulations on this role, rather. It's been such a joy and honor getting to work with you these years at the city level. And even, I think before I was on city council, definitely before I was on city council, represented someone in a traffic court case. And you did an excellent job as a prosecutor. So very great. Thanks for all, like Jennifer said, the depth of knowledge and hard work and legal acumen that you bring to the table. So we're really thankful for this new promotion.
As our mayor has, I too have seen the negotiator out of Kathy, and she's always been tough but fair, very civic-minded in her activities with the bar, and a great advisor to the Plan Commission and other boards that I served on. So this is a well-deserved promotion. Glad to see her taking the role.
All right. I also got a haircut, but wasn't long enough to donate it. Those days are behind me. Congrats, Kathy. We're excited to work with you. We do have one informal report on the agenda today. It's IR 529, which is our new revenue tax rate and voter approval tax rate update. Nick's put together that for the council and public. It essentially covers the corrections and updates to the tax rate calculation worksheet that we received from the McLennan County Tax Office recently. From a public hearing standpoint, we do not have any today. We do have 18 resolutions, and I'm going to highlight just a couple over the next few minutes. The first is Resolution 535, which of course sets the proposed city of Waco tax rate for fiscal year coming up at 76 cents and some change per 100 valuation. It also importantly sets public hearing date for September 7th to receive comments on the tax rate and sets the meeting for the vote on the tax rate at 6:00 PM that evening at the Waco Convention Center Baske Theater, this room. As a reminder from previous discussions, we're excited to propose the rate at the 76 cents level, which is nine tenths, about nine tenths of a cent lower than the current rate, which is a level of reduction that we haven't seen since fiscal year 2014. The second resolution I'll highlight is Resolution 539, which approves a three-year extension to the agreement between the city, the National Park Service, and Baylor University for operations at the Waco Mammoth National Monument. This is our third term of this agreement. It also outlines the work we do together, cooperating together at the site, protecting, preserving, interpreting, and maintaining the outstanding resources at the monument. There's only minor changes to the agreement involving staffing and title changes, really recognizing leadership changes between each party, and also acknowledging the national monument designation, which has happened in the last few years. As the council is well aware, we're proud to be associated with this facility. And I think it had a, even despite COVID, had a great year last year, creating millions of dollars of economic impact in our market.
And Bradley, real quick, I think there was an announcement this past week of, last month was the highest attendance. Set a record for that, is that right?
That is correct.
So really great to see that this is such a great resource for our community and our own citizens to really learn and understand. I've taken my own kiddos there, and it's such a unique experience to really understand history and science and natural history, and it's such a desirable cultural tourist attraction, too. So very great to embrace this.
I absolutely agree, Mayor. From the tourism perspective, one of the things that I found most interesting that I brag on all the time is that it is, I can't remember if it was 2019, but the highest grossing per capita gift shop.
Oh, wow.
Nationally. So I mean, it's, if you've been in, it's not a large space, but if you break down the dollars by, the square footage of it, it is the highest grossing in the country. And that's something to be incredibly proud of because not only do we have a nationally recognized exhibit, we are affiliated now with the National Park Services, the line that we have with Prehistoric Texas and all of the things that come with that as you travel along the Texas Brazos Trail. That's just another thing, plug, shameless plug. Just another thing that we can celebrate that we are stewards of in Waco. So I shout out to the staff that's out there always because they're always willing to go the extra mile for the tour, for the class, for the families, and just super proud of these folks.
They're just a ton of fun. The inner, like, second grader in me that wanted to grow up to be a paleontologist has had so much fun being out at the site, being in the sandbox that is probably made for children half my size, but digging around and finding the bones and great staff, like Councilwoman Bearfield said, just really an incredible depiction of the history of Waco. I had no idea that when our woolly mammoths were here, that it was just as hot in Texas. That was a shocking detail for me to discover, but yeah, so they just do an excellent job. And if you haven't gone, whether you have kids, like our mayor said, or you are an inner child yourself, definitely recommend.
And let's not forget the economic impact that this park has for our city. The National Park Services released a report a couple of weeks ago where in 2020, in the middle of a pandemic, there were 46,000 visitors that came to the Waco Mammoth Museum that spent about $2.8 million in Waco and surrounding areas. As Mayor Meek mentioned, that last, in July, 11,000 visitors just in one month alone. So definitely getting back to the pre-pandemic levels. And so I think to me, that shows a great opportunity to show the collaboration between the city of Waco, NPS, and Baylor University. You know, being on the board, I'm a little partial to the Waco Mammoth Foundation, you know, because of the work that takes place, but I also, you know, would like, in addition to what my fellow council member said, the economic impact that it has in our city is definitely needs to be touted and something to be proud of. So thank you for highlighting this, sir.
Welcome. Our second highlight, maybe not as fun as mammoths, but as impactful in some regards. We've been talking to the council about Resolution 544 for a few months, and I know you've been anticipating this item coming to you. It amends the fiscal year 21 operating budget to increase appropriations in the fleet fund by $84,000 approximately. And what it's doing is funding the award of a professional services contract for a fleet vehicle replacement strategy. The consultant selected is CST Fleet Services. For this item, I wanted to particularly highlight, there's a subcontractor to this firm called Eco Preserve, and they're going to be a subconsultant that specifically focuses on our move towards an EV strategy, electric vehicle strategy. And they're going to be working with our team, certainly Eric, as well, looking at, you know, which vehicles are good candidates now and which vehicles are good candidates in the future to move that direction, as well as finding grant opportunities to help fund and support that move. Eco Preserve is a female-owned corporation based out of Orlando, and we're excited to bring them on the team to support us. Our ordinance-wise, we have seven on the agenda today. Six of them are second readings, and there's one first reading. That's Ordinance 553, First Reading Approving a Negotiated Settlement Between the Atmos Cities Steering Committee and Atmos Energy Corporation Mid-Tex Division Declaring Existing Rates to Be Unreasonable, Adopting Tariffs That Reflect Adjustments Within the Negotiated Settlement and Finding These Rates to Be Just and Reasonable. I did want to highlight, you know, certainly this is an item that we bring forward as a team, but our city attorney Richie spends quite a bit of time working this project along the way. And the final ordinance I wanted to highlight is Ordinance 554, which is in our local agreement with Beverly Hills. This is a boundary adjustment between the city of Waco and Beverly Hills. It really represents an opportunity to support efficient service delivery between the two entities. It'll, it'll mean that properties are no longer split, you know, a parcel is not split, half served by Beverly Hills, half served by the city of Waco. There's alignment there that's helpful to those property owners. And additionally, it allows for the city of Waco to now fully control about nine acres at the Floyd Casey, the former Floyd Casey Development Site. I want to give a specific shout out to Assistant City Manager Kane, as well as the legal team for really working through this creative approach with the city of Beverly Hills. If there's no further questions or comments, that concludes my report.
I do want to echo those, the thanks for both the city of Beverly Hills and our city staff for really creatively navigating this to bring some efficiency. It's really interesting seeing how some of the boundaries split literally through the middle of a tract of land, making provision of services as well as collection of property taxes, interesting, if not challenging. I wanted to go back to one of the, Jen, and I can't remember exactly what number it was, but the extension of the disaster emergency declaration. And just take a moment to, in light of this declaration and the increase in cases in our community, take a moment to say that our health district, who I'm so thankful for, and other members of our city team, including our communications office, are hard at work to really proactively respond in this moment to meet the needs of our citizens. I think through communications and messaging, both mass communications and directed communications, as well as free testing, which we are in the final stages of negotiating and what that will be looking like, as well as the vaccination clinics that we offer. This is a moment where we are proactively responding to this moment. Covidwaco.com continues to be a hub of information. We're continuing to look at data on that website to ensure that we have the right, the most helpful data in place. The data is accurate, when I say right, I mean the most helpful data that is going to advise our community of the situation we find ourselves in. But we'll always continue to take this proactive response to, to respond to this moment. So I want to thank our health district and our communications office, as well as city legal, city manager's office, and so many other departments in the city who have worked really hard to respond, again, to this matter as we've seen cases go up. And as a point of reference, too, I think that there are some, on our social media pages, as well as our city YouTube page, there are some testimonies from the last press conference of different members of our community providing their experiences with COVID. The vaccine, the vaccine one, a community member didn't get the vaccine and almost died of COVID and described regret for not having done that. So I think it's a great, I would, I would recommend members of the community go view those testimonies and do the civic duty to become vaccinated. But that YouTube, the YouTube videos, I think are really compelling. So I wanted to add to that. That's all I had.
Thanks, Mayor. Well said. With that, I'm going to call our first work session. And we can go a little out of order. We're going to call Work Session 531 first. It's a discussion of Winter Storm Yuri, and specifically Ryan Holt, Assistant City Manager, coming up to review our draft after-action report. He'll be providing an overview of it. Of course, a draft of that document was included on the, in the agenda. And, you know, I think that I'm excited for you to hear this from Ryan, and want to certainly thank him for, for his leadership convening both all the city staff, as well as a lot of our outside partners that supported us during this winter storm, and hearing from them on what are our opportunities for improvement, what have we do well, and what are our challenges looking forward. So Ryan, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, and Counsel. We're here today to give you a brief overview on the extensive after-action process that staff has undertaken in the aftermath of what is now known officially as Texas Winter Storm DR4586-TX. Of course, you may also hear of the storm referred to as Winter Storm Yuri. During the presentation, we'll cover certainly the purpose of an after-action. In addition, we'll cover the process we used for that after-action. And we'll talk about how the findings were categorized, and we'll discuss the value of a place and time summary. And then we'll wrap up our conversation. As a note, photos in this presentation and in the report itself were provided both by city staff and also with permission from the photographers at the Waco Tribune Herald. The large photograph there was actually provided by our legal team. In every emergency or critical incident, there are, of course, portions of the response that are well-executed, and there are always opportunities for improvement. It's important to understand that an after-action is not intended to place blame, nor is it about individual performance. The core of an after-action is a thorough review to highlight successes and also identify potential areas of improvement, in addition to conducting a place and time analysis to ensure that the full scope of the emergency is properly documented and placed in the proper historical context. By conducting a detailed after-action, the findings can provide a roadmap for prevention, mitigation, response, and recovery to future emergencies. The after-action process for this emergency included engagement of all city departments and those non-governmental organizations that assisted the community during the winter weather emergency. As you can imagine, there are recognized best practices on how to conduct an evaluation such as this. However, our review process included an analysis of Federal Emergency Management Agency recognized core capabilities around public information and warning, infrastructure systems, environmental response, health and safety response, logistics and supply chain management, operational communications, community resiliency, threats and hazard identification, physical protective measures, operational coordination, critical transportation, fire management and suppression, mask care services, long-term vulnerability, risk and disaster resilience, access control and verification, and supply chain integrity and security. The review identified several dozen areas of significant performance to commend, recognize, and sustain over and above standard protocols and practice for operations in an emergency. Opportunities within particular disciplines recognized as areas to foster, sustain, or promote include energy pre-planning, or emergency pre-planning, training, operations, staff performance, asset reallocation, infrastructure resiliency, expanded IT technology solutions, internal and external communications, vendor relations, community relationships, non-governmental organization coordination, and state coordination. The next steps of the review process included capturing areas for improvement. For those areas identified for the improvement, the items were separated into operational disciplines of fleet, equipment, facilities, infrastructure, NGO coordination, and NGO coordination, along with emergency pre-planning and emergency management technology and staffing. For each item, a potential resolution or a mitigation was identified, a task leader was assigned, and a suggested timeline to resolution was documented. Mitigation efforts were assigned to one of four categories for a timeline to resolution. The most minor items were categorized as quick fix, or those items that would likely take less than 60 days to address. Next in the hierarchy of timed effort were those items that would likely take between 60 and 180 days, which were labeled as medial resolution. And then came long-term items that would likely take between six months and a year. And finally, items that would probably take more than a year were labeled for further review. The after-action also includes an almost hour-by-hour summary of the time period covered by the emergency, so that future consumers of the report can understand the full contextual scope of the emergency faced by the city. Some of the findings may seem burdensome or shocking if readers don't understand the depths of the challenges the city organization and the community as a whole faced. After enduring the COVID-19 pandemic for a full year, the Waco community had suffered a weather-related one-two punch that saw infrastructure and backup system failures place the community in potential jeopardy. For nine consecutive days this February, Waco saw record-low daily temperatures resulting in 205 straight hours of sub-freezing temperatures, besting the previous record set in 1983. The first round of winter weather arrived on Waco on Thursday, February 11th, with freezing fog and light icing accompanied by below-freezing temperatures that would persist for the next eight days. Significant winter weather in the form of snow and ice occurred on Sunday during the fourth day of sub-freezing temperatures, which also happened to be Valentine's Day. Even with temperatures remaining below freezing, Waco saw sunshine that helped slightly melt some roadways and sidewalks, only to see those areas refreeze overnight. This freeze-thaw cycle was interrupted on the following Tuesday, when Waco saw a record-low temperature of negative 1 degrees Fahrenheit. This record was 17 degrees colder than the previous record set in 2007. Another round of sleet and ice hit the area the next day, exacerbating serious winter conditions. Freezing temperatures finally broke two days later during the day on Friday, February 19th, and then sustained temperatures above freezing would come on Sunday, February 21st. This record winter weather made travel dangerous, and many homes without power, natural gas, phone, internet service, and in some cases, water, provided only slight shelter from the bitter cold. The record cold permeated Texas construction materials used in buildings that normally see months of temperatures in the 90s and above the 100-degree mark for weeks on end. During the emergency, 40, over 42,000 electrical customers in McLennan County lost electrical service at the height of the storm, with some remaining in the dark for days. This graph derived from the outage data obtained after the storm shows the quick onset of electrical outages for Waco McLennan County area and the sustained outages over the next two to three days for many residents and businesses. In preparation for the emergency, on Sunday, February 14th, city water utility crews had preloaded the water system to 90% of its normal capacity. To put, place that in context, normal wintertime load is around 60%. From that time on, the 14th, through the coldest temps, water leaks and continued usage pulled the water system down to just 10% of its capacity. The lowest point occurred late in the evening on February 17th, and this graph shows the slow recovery of the system. The prolonged record-low temperatures created hundreds of small and big leaks in the water utility system. Waco's water utility perched paresely close to having to implement significant service shutdowns within the system. While Waco ultimately avoided these widespread shutdowns, many other Texas water systems could not avoid shutdowns or issuing boil-water notices. Damages to the city's water distribution system and to private plumbing systems during the winter weather emergency resulted in Waco's water customers using 38 million gallons a day compared to a normal winter use of 18 to 20 million gallons a day. Auster water conservation measures enacted with consultation of this council by residents, businesses, and commercial users combined with an all-hands-on-deck search for leaks in the system that included many departments, including police, fire, and round-the-clock work by utility workers throughout the middle of the night with temperatures in single digits, often finding those utility workers standing in holes up to their waist in freezing water. They combined to keep the system substantially functional, with the capacity slowly building to above 60% over the next five days. In the aftermath of the storm, the Texas Department of Health Services would report that 57 lives were lost as a direct result of the storm. Two of those deaths occurred in central Texas, just north of Waco in Hill County. DSHS indicated that most of the deaths resulted from hypothermia, though other causes were listed as vehicle crashes, carbon monoxide poisoning, medical equipment failures, falls, and fires. As the community dealt with treacherous road conditions that prevented travel, temporary rolling blackouts that turned into days without power, and water leaks from broken pipes that threatened to shut down the water utility, the sheer grit, determination, ingenuity, and generosity of city employees, community organizations, and residents carried the city through the emergency. As systems failed, people stepped up. Prior established relationships served to form a network of resources and personnel that worked to provide critical supplies and resources to manage the emergency. After-action feedback has identified numerous positive outcomes from the storm and areas to enhance facility and community resilience in future emergencies. With respect to next steps, we don't intend for this report to just sit on the shelf. We wanted to have this opportunity to get feedback on the draft report from you, and then we'll make any additions to the report as necessary. We'll get the full, the full report back out to the department heads, and we'll continue implementing the mitigation directives outlined in the report. Some of the activity has already started, and you've heard Mr. Ford, Paul, and the budget team identifying funding to go directly to infrastructure resilience that will help prepare the community not only for future winter storms, but really any future emergency, such as significant weather events that often occur in Waco in the spring and fall, or even regional or statewide infrastructure failures, along with other situations that could affect critical assets and resources. Staff feels fairly confident that we can accomplish at least backup electrical generation needs at the Riverside Water Plant, which will put us in a positive position to provide up to 25 million gallons a day of water on backup power. Additionally, one of our designated community centers, our fuel supply, and our network infrastructure can be equipped to continue to function in future extended emergencies. Additionally, we'll continue to look for opportunities to expand that capability as we move forward. And that is my report. I look forward to any comments that any of you have.
Thank you, ACM Holt. I appreciate the data. Man, looking at this after-action review report, it's like reliving a minute-to-minute nightmare here from back in February, but such detail. And I'm impressed by how well the city was plugged into what was going on, really, again, minute-to-minute. I encourage everybody at home to, to look at this report. Starts on page 29 and ends on 40, or 73, a 44-page report. But it goes through the, everything that was happening, literally, you know, hour by hour, and strengths and weaknesses of what we see with our, with our preparation and responses were, and how we intend to address those going forward. And I think it's just a great report. One thing that you touched on a little bit, but this was a once-in-a-lifetime, I guess, One thing that you touched on a little bit, but this was a once-in-a-lifetime, I guess up to this lifetime, we don't know if it's going to happen again, but as best we can be prepared for this going forward, not only on the cold side with warming centers, but also on the heat side, which I think is probably more apt to happen going forward in Waco, Texas, and how what we learned here can translate into a heat event instead of a cold event. And I don't expect to answer that question right now, but just, I think as we sharpen up our prep forces, that we'd be thinking about the other extreme too, because I think the likelihood of that is probably more than having another cold spell.
Yes, sir, absolutely. We've been having conversations about that. You know, one of the things is, like you said, as we look back at this emergency, put it in the proper context in Texas, that we're at least as likely to have things in the spring and fall, and certainly in the summer. And so we've been identifying facilities that we want to utilize for both kinds of emergencies going forward.
Ryan, you want to speak specifically to, like, what those considerations are from a, because a lot of that boils down to the funding you mentioned earlier about backup power and things of that nature of, we got to be able to serve people in those spaces.
Yeah, so what is, I mean, what is fairly typical in municipalities is to use community centers as your warming centers or cooling centers, and we're working very closely with Parks and Rec to identify geographically-based community centers. Right now, we're looking at the multipurpose center, South Waco Community Center, and the Dewey Recreation Center. One of those, which was a good lesson to us and is documented in the AR, we had intended to use the multipurpose center in this emergency, and it never had power. And so a quick and steep lesson for us. And so that's part of our recommendations moving forward is to, you know, identify those centers, number one, so that staff knows that that's where they're going to be. We can identify what goods are needed to fully, you know, implement those locations, and to be able to provide resiliency when bad things happen. And so we've done that documentation, we'll continue that moving forward, and we'll report that to you as we go through that process.
Thank you.
Before you go forward on that point, and I know you're not done, Jim, ACM Holt, the, what I appreciated seeing in the report was incredibly thorough. It, as, you know, when we get into things and we get in emergency situations, we instinctively react and respond, and you have no idea what we don't know until we don't know it. So one of the things that you mentioned just recently that I appreciate seeing was that, you know, where we will position and utilize warming or cooling centers have to be identified as places of emergency, because I know that that's a thing with the power company, and I don't know that that was the case. So getting that on that list so that regardless, and slash, emergency generators and the things that go with that, because we all know the majority of 76704 was without power for days. And so we can't have strategically-placed location, community locations throughout our city without making sure that they're online and identified with all the things and equipment that they need. And there is no way to know what all that is, but I trust that we are walking through this process to do so. The other piece, and because I'm gonna shut up, I'm gonna let them finish, but I wanted to make sure, was one of the things that, the need for medical social workers. Because, yeah, you can come to the warming center, thank you St. Albans and all the other churches that activated their doors and opened and moved quickly. You know, yes, come ye all. Oh, you don't have your oxygen with you? No one, I don't know that, you know, I don't know that I even would have put all of that in my head, but, you know, Waco being the city that it is, and with the citizens that we have, I'm so glad that they were activating quickly and using their strength to do the things that we needed to do to fill in the gap. But now we know, and it's in the after-action report, and so we'll prepare for the next time. But let's continue to think about those things. I thought it was brilliant, you know, to have the emergency insulin and to have those things. I don't know how you keep that, but we'll figure it out, right? And so those things, updating our facilities, thank you for mentioning cooling centers, because I know that there's a possibility that we will, you know, in our ever-fluid climate that is changing, see what I did? We don't know what's going to happen next summer, next winter, next spring. And so the preparations for this is imperative, but I think that our facilities, I think that they're probably, we, I don't know what we can identify in five, because I think there's some active spaces in three and five that we can utilize, but I want to make sure, even though we don't have a city facility, maybe, or is it, there has to be something identified per district, because what I don't want to do is not have the ability to, within a community, have it. I mean, yes, our core is imperative, but also our outline parts of our district, and you may want to consider, for one, also what it looks like to activate space in TSTC and see if we can get a partnership with them, because they're out there kind of alone on an island themselves, but they are a part of District 1, so I don't want them to have to feel like you've got to go from there to get to somewhere. So, you know, but I just want to make sure that we're thinking, because I don't know what that space is, you know, because we don't have readily available community centers in three or five. But, you know, we got to figure out what that is too, because I don't want, I don't want any of them trying to figure it out.
ACM Holt, this is just a phenomenal document. I imagine there's some reference that multiple other smaller municipalities and entities reached out to the city of Waco. So I don't know if we intend to publish this, but if we do, I think it would behoove us to include what the process looked like that y'all went through, so that way it could be used as a guiding document for other entities. Curious if you know off the top of your head the estimated total amount of purchases that we need? There's lots of references throughout the document of, we need to purchase this, we need to purchase that, if you don't know that very precise number.
I don't know that. I can tell you that there, an outside consulting firm has been engaged to help us go through all that for potential FEMA reimbursement, and so they're still working through those processes. And we have a very talented emergency management crew who are here with us today, and they're working with finance to make sure we've gathered all those appropriate documents.
Are we imagining that some of these purchases and needs are going to, are already identified and represented in the FY '22 budget, and then some will be seeking state or federal resources?
Yeah, I think, in our conversations with the manager and budget, that really, nothing's off the table as far as funding goes. I think you saw a bucket of the ARP money tagged as resiliency, there'll be some of that. I think as we move forward, conversations about regular budget dollars will be part of that too, recognizing that resiliency is one of the council goals and objectives. So we'll certainly look at all opportunities there, along with additional grant funding, FEMA reimbursement, all those items.
Councilmember, if I may, put some context to, you know, Ryan used one sentence to describe backup power at Riverside, and that was probably an $8 to $10 million sentence.
Right.
Right? I mean, the generation to pump out 25 million gallons, including fuel storage and things of that nature, is probably going to run us somewhere around that amount of money in the, so that is why, as he mentioned, we have a bucket for the ARP, federal resources, that we do intend to bring forward a spending plan to the council, you know, in the next month or two, particularly focused on resiliency, because one thing we have learned is we don't want to be at the, you know, at the mercy of electric power sources that don't make decisions for us, right? They make decisions to protect the grid across the entire state. We want to manage ourselves differently, and that's going to cost us significant amounts of resources. But fortunately, you know, it's a qualifying expense under the American Rescue Plan, so.
Also for, this document was fascinating to read. I think all of us felt incredibly engaged with this process, and I know I was working on getting out information and talking to folks from when I woke up in the morning until I went to bed every night, and yet, what I knew of the work that this, that everybody in this room was doing was just a fraction of what's reflected in this document. For folks that haven't read, there, it's so detailed, from the needs of how do we protect our decorative fountains, to how do we keep warm our puppies and our kittens that are in our care, and the exotic animals that are in warm climates in our zoo, how do we make sure that we have the chemicals needed on hand to get the padlocks to open, so we have access to supplies? I just left reading this document feeling a little traumatized, like Holmes had mentioned. I was like, wow, I have suppressed so much of this, and reading this was an experience for my nervous system, but so impressed by the entire senior leadership team at the city and our city staff members that slept in facilities that weren't safe and that weren't set up to have someone sleep on a cot. City family members that were impacted by having their parent or parents gone being responsive to this. This was just such an eye-opening document, so thank you for creating such a thorough, well-documented report. Two other things, I heard often from my residents that a frustration with lack of access to information in Spanish, and so that's something I didn't see reflected that I would really like to see prioritized, is making sure that when, and I know this is a part of our larger conversation, but in emergency, we have to have translators and interpreters that can be pushing out those graphics in English and Spanish, especially as we see the new census data come back about our county. And then there is a reference to the warming centers and go-kits. I wonder if, in addition to the rec centers that we activate, if we could have some sort of a list that we review on an annual basis of, these are the churches or the businesses that have agreed for this upcoming year that if a crisis were to occur, they've got some volunteer base that they can activate, and their space is ready. And then, I love the idea of having go-kits ready that we can deploy to these spaces, but didn't see a whole lot of details referenced to that. So I'd be curious to know, how many do we think we need to have? How often do we want to make sure that the, like, foil blankets are in there, and there's water, and there's food, and making sure that those are all reviewed on an annual basis? But this is just, again, phenomenal. Thank you for the hard work in this. This was well worth the wait to see such an excellently-produced document.
Thank you. I will say that none of this feedback would have been possible if, I mean, because everybody we contacted gave us feedback, from every department director, any staff member, all the, you know, St. Albans and Highland, everybody, Salvation Army, they all gave us really good feedback, and so this was, this was the work of a lot of folks to document this.
Shout-out to St. Albans, to Highland, to Grassroots, to Jesus Love, to Dewey, to so many entities, both in District 4 and across the city, that were so ready to serve our neighbors and to serve the city in any way that they could.
Yeah, I'll just say, this is an incredibly detailed report. Ryan, thank you so much for you and your team putting this together, and it's quite comprehensive, it's meticulous, and it's hourly, and it's amazing. But it underscores really the heroism of our city staff and our city management during this time of great crisis for our community. And I, obviously, I echo my fellow council members' comments about, about just the way that our city staff stepped up to hear of utility workers who were waist-deep in freezing water is literally chilling, and I, that is just an unimaginable job to have, but that's the kind of above and beyond that the city staff undertook during this time. And so grateful to, not grateful to relive it, but grateful to go back through and see the high quality of our response and the heroism really of so many who stepped up, and grateful, again, for those nonprofit partners that Councilmember Palmer listed, and all the others that really, you know, were their neighbors' keeper during this time. But thank you so much for this report. It's really wonderful.
I don't have anything in addition to add to what my fellow council members have said. I will say that in reading the report, while, yes, I did feel the trauma coming from it, but also, it made me proud to live in a community like Waco where the troops rallied together and really, everyone rolled their sleeves up and did what they did to help, from our staff members that were sleeping in their office around the clock, to our crew, our street crews, and Waco PD, and Waco Fire Department that were out there literally rescuing people that were maybe stuck in ice or their car was stranded, to our communications department with Mayor Meek and myself doing PSAs about, you know, the safety, what's to come, how to combat it, things that we can do at home to help preserve water, to really our community that opened up their homes to their neighbors that lost power, that, I know we had guests in our home, we were one of the fortunate ones that didn't lose power, but we had guests to come stay with us for a few days, and everyone doing their part to really just making sure that we are taking care of our neighbors. And to me, that is the best example of the community that we live in, that we may live in different parts of the city, we may have our differences, but when things get tough and hard, we support one another, we take care of one another, and we look out for one another. And so for that, I am grateful for. I'm excited to see the next steps, how we're going to, you know, what we're going to talk about. I am very excited to see that we're talking about possibly doing some backup generators at our water plants. You know, I never want to go through that fear again of possibly losing water and half of our city, or the majority of our city, losing water access. Half of our city already didn't have electricity, and so I would hate for that to be an added thing. So I thank you for doing this, ACM Holt. I know by no means are we done with this project. This is something that I would at least like to revisit every year or so, just to make sure that we freshen it up. As you said, this is not a report that we're just going to, once it's completed, just put it on the shelf and let it collect dust. I would like to revisit it to see things that we need to change as we move throughout, things that we might need to, you know, just change a little bit, or the technology that we're going to gain, how that would help and implement. But overall, thank you for bringing this, and I'm excited to see what's to come.
Ryan, thanks so much for this. The whole city management team, and Waco's strategic preparedness for this moment made this actually, I think, a triumphant moment for us. And I love that this report shows that there's going to be better days ahead, or we'll be more prepared than the next go-around. But I still think that we have to acknowledge that Waco fared much better than other cities, and that wasn't by accident. That was because there was a level of preparedness that we had put into place before this moment. I'm, like all my co-council members, gonna just beat a dead horse, because I'm not gonna not. I'm just so proud of our team. I'm so proud of our team, and have said it about this instance, will continue to say this about this storm for the rest of my life. From our water utilities team, from our street crews, from our first responders, to city manager and legal literally sleeping in their offices, to our communications team also sleeping, Larry, sleeping in his office, our corporate friends who found water when no one else in the state could have water. We had a convention center filled with water that we could give to our residents and share with other communities, our own Waco residents who stepped up and served each other, and then this council, who was communicating throughout the day, this council who was boots-on-the-ground responding to what they were hearing. So I want to thank the members up here at this desk too for their hard work. I think that, I'm always fascinated by what is, by culture, and then specifically about our culture, what is the DNA of Waco? What do we stand for? What is our identity? And I think how our residents and citizens and our own city team responded to this moment just embodies that so well, with the resilience, the grit, the generosity that Ryan mentioned, the hard work. You know, there's a little fight in there, and I think that, and not with each other, with the real enemy, which in this case was the storm. I think loving our neighbor. I think this is the Waco way, this is the identity of the city, and I think it was embodied so well in this moment. You know, there's things Waco couldn't control, like our electric grid, there were things that we could control, and I think that, I'm just proud of that. You know, it just felt like as an issue would arise, we would respond quickly, both with our community partners and the city. Hey, people don't have power, we need to get them somewhere warm, let's get a shelter. Okay, what are we going to do for transportation? The roads are dangerous, we're going to get emergency vehicles to drive them to those shelters. Street crews running the roads all night long. And then the real, the real thing, water. When people don't have power, and your stove is electric, a boil-water notice means you don't have water if you don't have power. So. So, we were able to make sure that people had access to clean, drinkable water by police officers, firefighters, city employees, and then our water utilities team going all over the city and saying, oh, let's see water coming out of that, that building right there. There's a leak. Let's turn off the water there to save our water capacity. It's a really courageous story. I do think that there was good planning that led to this moment, from water capacity to other issues. I think the building up of a really smart team who was in that room and, you know, I, hearing, you know, water leadership be like, I think we're gonna go and boil water. And then, at the last second be like, no, if we do this, this, and this, then we'll be able to, we'll be okay. I mean, we had good leaders at the helm that were able to keep our citizens safe. I'm excited about the future. I think we're gonna respond better. It's no surprise to me that we're gonna have, we have a thorough report that documents the steps that we need to take to be an even more prepared, even safer city, because that is what, that spirit, that attention to detail is what allowed Waco to fare this storm, as hard as it was, fare this storm so much better than some of our other cities, the other cities here in Texas. So, just very thankful and look forward to seeing this document be put into action in the days ahead.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor, Council. And again, thanks for y'all's leadership throughout the week and comments, even today. It makes you, makes you tear up a little bit. Next up, Clint, you have to follow that. Sorry. Clint's got a great update, too. Let's get him to do here.
It's affiliated with trauma.
Yeah. It's, it's actually really, really good. I've seen a preview of it. It's a discussion of the city plan, the Waco's Comprehensive Plan 2040. A couple of months ago, the council asked for kind of a five-year look-back of what all we'd accomplished in the comprehensive plan. And Clint and his team had put this together and I think it speaks to the, you know, A, the, how great of a document it was that was put together and how long of a view it has, but also, the, the council and staff's ability to execute on some really important points within the plan. And without stealing any thunder from Clint.
Sure.
And giving any examples. I'll let you start talking.
Thank you, Bradley. Thank you, Mayor, City Council. As Bradley mentioned, this is, we're coming up on the five-year anniversary of the adoption of our 2040 Comprehensive Plan, which is a 25-year planning horizon lookout for, that provides a roadmap for growth and development in the city. So, what we wanted to talk about today is go, go through some of the background of the plan, how it got adopted, the components, what we've accomplished in the five years since it's been adopted, and then, a strategy moving forward on updating it so the document stays fresh and useful. So, in 2016, the, the city council did adopt our Comprehensive Plan. It was our fifth Comprehensive Plan adoption since 1958, but the first one since 2000. So, 16 years between the last plan, which we've talked about keeping plans relevant and off the shelf. We did want this to be a dynamic and evolving document that should be updated regularly to shore relevance. The 2016 plan was done in-house. We had gone through some major planning projects and initiatives, including the Community Vision Project, the Upjohn Plan, and the Imagine Waco Plan. So, we felt like it was putting all those components together and all the work and all the public input that had gone through those efforts into this document. And so, this was our first plan that was an in-house plan without a help from a consultant. And I think it, because it is more of our residents, our staff, our council's plan, it has been more relevant and it's been used more in those five years. And then, an important part of it, the plan does call for a major re-evaluation and update every five years to keep that relevancy of the plan. And so, that's, that's where we're at right now. And so, the, the, the plan had nine chapters, has nine chapters ranging from goals and objectives all the way down to implementation. And you can see everything from economic development, which was the Upjohn Plan, growth management, transportation, utilities, housing, livability, and environment. Lots of information in that document, lots of goals and objectives, and then 109 measurable recommendations that came out of that. And out of those 109, either, either, 80 of those have either been completed or ongoing projects. So, we've accomplished a lot in the last five years. And a lot of those recommendations overlap in the chapters. If you think about, you know, transportation and growth management and infrastructure and growth management, all those things are related. So, they apply to more than one component of the plan. And then, in addition to those 109 recommendations, there was the CIP project recommendations, specific projects in the plan. And so, moving on to what we've done over the last five years and when you start putting this together, it's, it's pretty amazing what we've accomplished with the leadership of this council. And, you know, all our staff, the, the plan gets input from nearly all of the departments and major stakeholders. Just looking at some of the, the major accomplishments, our Water and Wastewater Master Plan implementation, over $98 million has been invested in water projects in the last five years, and then $104 million in sewer projects. So, that Building Waco's program came out of those master plans and, you know, over $200 million of water and sewer projects. $48 million in the Better Streets Waco Program, and that's just over a three-year period, because we did spend that first couple of years identifying and implementing a new, a modern pavement management program to see where we were and had that baseline. You see those numbers, those indexes on the road. That took a while. Now, we've, with council's leadership, invested over $48 million in the last three years in those projects. Completed the Stormwater Master Plan, that was an ongoing project for over a decade, finished that, and then adopted the Stormwater Utility Fee. It's a dedicated source for funding for construction and maintenance of stormwater infrastructure, which was a major need, because we did not have a, a source of funding for, for infrastructure, stormwater infrastructure before that. It was just out of the general fund. And then, another, a major recommendation was to invest in fire protection services and facilities to achieve the ISO rating of number one, which we've accomplished in, you know, one of the few communities throughout the country that has that designation. And that's been directly, you know, related to the investment we've made in our facilities. Moving on to some other accomplishments are impact fees that were adopted in 2020, which is an equitable funding tool for development, infrastructure, water, sewer, roadway, so the development pays its fair share of the cost for upgrading and extending utilities to newly-developed areas. The completion of the BRT feasibility study, first step towards realignment of the Waco Transit System. And then, adoption of infill incentives program and design guidelines, which we actually have a part of that on the agenda for second reading today with the residential design standards. But incentivizing through our tax foreclosure process and then our residential tax abatement and other initiatives to incentivize infill development. Some other accomplishments was the, to strengthen and seek input from our neighborhood associations concerning projects, policies, and issues that impact our neighborhoods. This is a new Office of Neighborhood Engagement led by Milet Harrison was created and, you know, for the sole purpose of this, strengthening our neighborhood associations. And you're already seeing that payoff with the new neighborhood associations re-engaging and providing input into the city process. And then, one of the first recommendations that was accomplished was, right off the bat, was supporting Creative Waco in the cultural district and Greater Downtown Waco is recognized as a cultural district. And then, supporting arts, cultural arts initiatives, as you can see throughout our city and downtown. And then, finally, implementation of the recommendations of Imagine Waco. And you can see those all over downtown right now and physical reconstruction with the Bridge Street Plaza, Alma Avenue, Streetscape Project, Riverfront Development, and Washington Avenue Conversion. All those were direct recommendations out of the, the plan and have occurred in the last five years. And there's, there's, there's plenty more of those, the, the funding, tip funding projects that are in line with the Imagine Waco and the Comprehensive Plan. You see those coming in all the time. So, now that we've hit our five-year anniversary and looking forward to how we keep this document relevant, we do have a strategy for updating the plan. Again, we don't think we need to start over. It's a, it's a good document that's got the foundation. Again, it was looking at 25 years, so we, we feel like it's still a good document to move forward. We just need to update it. So, but we want to retain the guiding principle that's laid out in this as sustainable development that meets the needs of the present without compromising the ability of future generations to meet their own needs. This is actually a great time to be updating the plan because it should reflect shifts in demographic and economic trends based on census numbers. And I think everybody's aware that we're starting to get some of those numbers in with the county numbers that just came in at the end of last week and, and calibrating our growth projections and recommendations. That, I will point out, we, you know, we're still drilling down on that data, but the, the county numbers came in at a 10.9% growth over that 10 years, which is really close to what we had projected as a, we had a projection of a 1.07 annual growth rate, which is pretty close to that 10.9 that we actually saw. But we still need to drill down on those numbers and calibrate our growth projections and recommendations and then update our future land use plan to meet, meet those new growth projections. You know, this plan, we had seen population declines in our core over the past several decades as a, as a trend. And this plan recommended a more balanced growth, growth rate. And that's what you see in this map here. It's small, but you can see, we know we're gonna have growth on the outside, but we needed to have initiatives to stop the decline in the core to be a strong community. So, it, when you look, when you look down in this map and see the core, there, it calls for stabilization of growth there and actually some moderate increases in that. And so, the plan recommendations enforce that growth pattern. And so, we'll be able to see how we did with the new census numbers and then what we need to do with the recommendations to make sure we're keeping, moving forward with that growth pattern. There's been a lot of new planning efforts that need to be incorporated into the, the new, the update of the plan. And you can see the list of them there, from Parks and Recreation Master Plan and the Citywide Trails Master Plan that's ongoing right now, to the Stormwater Master Plan that just finished, the Active Transportation Plan that looks at alternate forms of transportation, our subdivision zoning ordinance study that's completed that needs to be implemented and some ordinance updates, the housing study that's ongoing right now, the LaSalle Avenue District Plan that just wrapped up, and then, the Fixed Route Realignment Study that is part of the BRT process. And then, there's some new components that we need to take a look at. Our Thoroughfare Plan, which lays out a transportation network for collector and arterial streets. It, it needs a revisit. It's, the last one was done in 2012, so we're coming up on a decade-old of that. The Water and Wastewater Master Plans need to be updated. They were, again, coincided with the Comprehensive Plan update, so we're, we're looking at updating those as well. That will lay out what's needed to, from an infrastructure standpoint, to coincide with growth. And then, some of the, the items and studies that are in the, in the budget request for Highway 84 corridor greenfield study, the 25th, 26th street corridor study, and then the downtown Streetscape Plan. Also, in the proposed budget for next year, we do have a new long-range planning manager position. And this position will act as a point person for the plan update and coordinate this and make sure we can sustain and keep that moving forward. That'll be their, their main focus is working on long-range playing, planning activities. And so, we're real excited about that opportunity and appreciate council's consideration in that new position. And just like in the 2016 plan, we'd like to use the Plan Commission as the, the steering committee for the plan update, with obviously, having a vigorous public engagement process that would include lots of different opportunities for public input as we move along. And then, one, one thing that was actually in this document that we did not accomplish that I want to make sure that we do this time is having a, a more prioritized plan for the plan recommendations and implementing the plan. It actually calls for an annual report to make sure that we're moving forward and, and gives the council opportunity to prioritize those implementation strategies. So, we're gonna do a better job on this round and actually have a, a, a format laid out in this plan that will guide that process. And with that, I'll open it up for questions or discussion.
This, Holmes, I'll start it off. Clint, this is a great update. I remember when I first got on council back in 2016, I thought, man, 2040 sounds like a long ways off. You know, in the couple of pages that you did here of the progress we've made in the last five, five years in accordance with this plan, I mean, big, you know, bold project, the Stormwater Master Plan. I mean, everything you have listed here, zoning, housing study, LaSalle District, route realignment, in addition to Bridge Street Plaza. All these things were conceptual five years ago and the fact that we were moving towards, you know, a better Waco on all of these initiatives. And we've got a lot in store here with this council, too. I think we were very ambitious and we want to all get it done as quickly as possible. So, and I think all of us use this as a guiding document as well, and I'm happy to see the sort of measurement, I think, is important as we look at what we've actually done to what we kind of budgeted five years ago. And it looks like we're making pretty good progress. So, thanks. Keep us updated here. And I like the idea of kind of updating this as we go along. Thanks, Clint.
Clint, this is, again, another beautiful document we're seeing today. I love the idea that you mentioned of having really clear implementation strategies. I love, I love a good SMART goal. So, any way that we can say, are we clearly making progress on this? Yes or no? What do we need to do? What are the barriers keeping us from that? Feels exciting and I love the idea of getting council to have eyes on it every year to prioritize as the six of us what we think are the top issues we want to see addressed. So, thanks for showing this to us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Clint, for going back and, and addressing some of our concerns and where are we in this? Because, yes, 2040 seemed like it would be a million years from when you all created this document, but it's tomorrow in real life, especially when we're talking about how cities run. So, it is good for us to make a stopping point to check in. So, I appreciate that part. The other thing is, as councils change, priorities change. I mean, we, from that time to this, you've changed city managers. You've kind of turned, you've done some things differently. And so, with the update, it allows to realign with the new council priorities and the strategic plans and priorities and goals that are set from our city manager, our new city manager, that are reflective of the goals that, that we set for, you know, our individual districts as well as the city as a whole. So, within that, I'm, I'm, I'm asking, and I'm sure that, that it, it's a you-understood, but because those strategic plans and pillars that were set have shifted, have those been woven into the goals that were set in 2040? And if not, will they be?
They will be. Yeah, that's, that's what we'll look for with this update, is to calibrate and align those with the current goals and objectives of the council.
And for, and my apologies, because it is kind of disaggregating the work in a manner, but I like when things, as we've done in the, what we did with the budget, what we have done with all the most recent documents, that the things that we see that seek, seek out to do align with those goals and priorities. So, can they be kind of recalibrated to where they fall under the specific pillars? they fall under the specific pillar so that we are sending one brand message and, you know, making one, one definitive statement about these things. These are our priorities and these are where these go. And I mean, now, in the next five years, when it changes again, our bad, you probably have to redo it again. But I think it all needs to be in line and fluid so that it's not confusing for the reader. Cause I fully expect, you know, when you pull out the comprehensive plan that's this big and this thick, right? And you're like, huh. But I think everybody really who is involved in, in understanding and really going to dig into how this city works, needs to see it and have one. Or go to the library and read it. But you know, I think that, that since we have changed kind of what our priorities are, I think that, that as we adjust and align, if it could be broken down in that manner, it would be helpful for us going forward. But I am most appreciative of this work and, I mean, and its, its original concept also, but making, you know, letting us see, because these are all real big goals. You know, we dream live and in color around here. And, and we have to be able to say, okay, we, we thought that and oh, that worked. Look, we did it. Remember? See, look. That's helpful. And it's helpful to know how much further we have to go. So we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Clint, thank you again for the presentation, as my council members have said. I do have one question, and I, I think Councilmember Bearfield was alluding to it, but I want to ask this, so I'm understanding correctly. I just want to make sure that as our council has transitioned and our goals have transitioned, that our work in equity and sustainability is going to be included in the comprehensive plan. It might be already. I don't know. I didn't see it on here, but I just want to make sure that that is being thought about as we move forward with this comprehensive plan.
Yes, there, there, there is a lot of that baked in the, the plan that was adopted in 2016. I think there'll be more focus on that with the update. That will be specific that, that aligns with those goals that have been laid out from council.
Yeah, I think with, with the amount of time and money, not only this council and the staff has put forward with equity and sustainability, I would, you know, I think it's great that it's included in the comprehensive plan. And as we move forward, it's more intertwined with what's going on. And, and so I, I foresee it being a part of our priority for a while, if not till the last one of us gets off council, whenever that may be. But, but if it's included, thank you so much for doing that. I think it is imperative that we revisit this every five to seven years because as not only the council changes, our city changes and the growth of our city changes. And as you mentioned, the census every, every 10 years changes. And so I think as we're keeping up with the times and making sure, like we talked about last presentation, as this is not another plan that's just going to go on the shelf and, and we have it just because we did it, but we're revisiting it and really looking for those opportunities to tweak it or even make sure that we're sticking to the plan. I think it's very important, but thank you so much for making the presentation.
Sure. Great job. Excited for this, to continue to move forward. And really great to be able to look back and see all the great work that has been accomplished. And Clint, you said, thanks to the city council. I'll say thanks to staff. We've really accomplished some good things that again, with good planning, our city is going to be in a good spot in the future. As projects occur, I really, well, let me back up. I really like the idea of that annual report. I think that kind of the thing that's going around in my head is there's a lot of like thing, projects in the pipeline. And I just wonder how they graft into this. And, and I don't know if that's a part of like an annual action, the, the annual plan that you're, you're thinking of, or if, if we need something different. And in my head, where I think there needs to be some level of coordination from a city planning perspective. And, and I'm not, I don't have a degree in this like other staff members in this room do. So I shouldn't, but what I'd submit, or my question would be is, you know, like in the core of our city, we have all of these capital assets that are coming online that are, that have recently come into play, that are in process or we think that are really likely to happen to be built and developed. And some of that's public spaces, like the Bridge Street Development. Some of that's private development, like our hotel, Magnolia HQ, or some, you know, new housing that's coming online. And then I think there's also strategies that we're hoping to accomplish, new TIF zones, new pit zones, new housing strategies. And, and I think there's like a kind of a core concept that's kind of a set of goals around the core that, that I'm thinking of. And then there's kind of the greenfield, which is also capital assets and strategies that might be distinct from the core, but still kind of similar in terms of, you know, how are we out, you know, setting up commercial districts in, in the greenfield? What are we doing to really make sure that this part of the community is built to last? And I don't know if that graphs, like those, that, the strategy of kind of connecting those dots come under an annual plan, or if those are their own thing that kind of just meet the goals and are under the umbrella of, of this, or kind of working in coordination with this, this plan or not. But I think that with all of the growth that we're seeing, ensuring that there's as much strategy behind that as possible, I think is imperative. And so that's kind of what I would lob out there to the people with the degrees in planning in the room to say, how, how are we really pulling all of this opportunity together with our partners, nonprofits, business, strategies, and really working behind that coordinated strategy to where it's not just kind of happening to us, but it's part of a plan. And this plan, I think is a great rubric for that, but I'm just curious how those assets and those strategies, some, some of them I just referenced kind of fit into that. Really excited about this. Again, congratulations on the first five years of this plan. You can't retire until 2040.
2040, okay.
It's funny, some people are saying 2040 seems like a million years. 2015 seems like a million years ago, especially after 2020, when we were adopted this. I think we were at the multipurpose center for that big meeting with Plan Commission. Are we at the off-center? I can't remember. We had a big, we had a big meeting and it's, it's a real pleasure to see all the, the accomplishments that we've had under that. But I think that, you know, consistently with the conversation we had earlier, Waco's greatness is tied to the strategy of the leaders behind that greatness, really working to make sure that we're seizing the opportunity that's before us. And I think this plan's directly in correlation to that. So, thanks Clint. And with that, I think we're going to take a 15, let's take a 15 minute break and reconvene right around 3:30. Does that sound good?
Yep.
Keep going again.
Let's do it.
Come back from our break and resume with a, I believe Bradley, I'll turn it over to you, but a discussion on Waco Transit.
That's correct, Mayor. We've got a work session 5:30, which is discussion of Waco Transit System Fixed Route Realignment Study. It's on, your agenda today is a resolution, that realignment study, the award of a contract. We've got Serena Stevenson, Waco Transit General Manager here to provide an overview as well as answer any questions about the resolution. Serena.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. This presentation will cover how the Fixed Route Realignment Study will assess the current state of transit mobility. It will also address the growing need to meet transit services in the Waco region. I will provide a brief overview over the current services, the project scope, how we will include a comprehensive review of planning documents, as well as the next steps moving forward. Waco Transit System currently consists of nine fixed routes. We provide services in the Waco urbanized area. We have our service delivery time between Monday through Friday is from 5:15 to 6:15, 5:15 in the morning to 7:15 in the evening. We also provide services on Saturday from 6:15 to 8:15 in the evening. We have two shuttle services, the LaSalle Circle, as well as the Silo District Trolley. The Silo District Trolley is currently being, it's been suspended since March of 2020, but we're looking at alternative funding sources in order to bring that system back up. We also have an Evening Link Services, Evening Link Service that provides service Monday through Saturday from 8:30 PM to 11:45 at night. That service is for people that have non-traditional work hours. They're in a position to call the transit system or we can take them home from work or any other type of things that they may be doing. We have one commuter route. It runs between Waco, Marlin, and it runs to San Simeon Farms as well. Our complimentary pair of transit service runs Monday through Saturday. It provides services to individuals who have a disability that prevents them from being able to utilize our fixed route service. The, it, it's an application process required for them to use it, but there's not any stipulations on the type of trips that they take. They can go anywhere, just like you would do on the fixed route service. We also serve, we also offer five Baylor University service routes that service the campus. Sorry. The Fixed Route Realignment Scope will detail how the project team will, will develop three separate scenarios in order to be considered to enhance the Waco Transit System network. The first scenario will assume that a bus rapid transit service is operating using the full extent of the locally preferred alignment. Our second scenario will assume that a limited stop express bus service is operating, which will use a 30 minute headway and also use the full extent of the locally preferred alignment. However, with the modified operating segment on the, on the second scenario, it may have adjustments so that we can cut costs and still provide service along the LPA. With our third scenario being presented, we will look for no enhanced transit service that operates along the locally preferred alignment. With that, we want to look at Waco Transit System from a Blake Slate. We want to see how we may be able to address some of those unmet, unmet needs in the community and be able to use a more cost effective approach to reach the growth in the city. While we were having our steering committees during the NIPA and engineering review, our, the steering committee asked that we provide additional alternatives to just having, you know, the feeder routes for our BRT system. So they tasked us, we'll put together a route realignment study so that we can figure out what can we do strategically to address all the transit needs in the community and, and offer options and not just the feeder system. During the route realignment scope, there will be certain tasks that will be completed in order to meet the deliverables. One of those will be an existing conditions, an existing condition analysis. This will be the foundation that defines the current transit system. It will be used to evaluate current conditions and to aid in identifying alternative service changes, which will include our fleet utilization as well as our operations. There will also be a scenario development and analysis process. This will build from the public engagement efforts as well as the existing conditions analysis. The project team will develop a set of recommendations. And from there, we'll take those recommendations and look for opportunities where we can rebuild, reduce, reduce redundancies and also eliminate services that aren't necessary. The final recommendation will take all of the elements of the scope and balance improving connectivity and minimizing travel time to, to produce the most cost effective mix of transit solutions. It will also include implementation and a funding plan. It is seldom in the best interest of the community or a project to reinvent the wheel from scratch. Therefore, we will also take a comprehensive review and identify existing plans, existing planning documents, as well as transit plans. We want to take in consideration where the growth in the community is, and we want to not only take consideration transit, but we want to look at transportation, land use, as well as economic development. I'm sorry. Next steps. The primary purpose of the study is to identify ways to improve the existing public transit services in the Waco community. Once the project kickoff is completed and the existing condition analysis is reviewed, the individual scenarios will be developed based on public engagement and stakeholder field feedback. Our hope is that the next step, we will continue to update the council as the project moves forward on the, on the processes and the direction that the public engagement process provides, as well as any other strategic things that need to be included for us to produce a final product that outlines a customized service scenario that reflects the community input as well as the technical analysis. If the resolution is approved, upon execution, upon execution of the contract, it should take about nine months for us to complete the route realignment study. Any
Serena, thank you so much for the presentation. I do appreciate you coming and presenting to us today. Few questions about the presentation, and this is just me thinking, so if there are no direct answers, I completely understand. But one of the questions you mentioned at the Silo District Trolley has not been in operation since March 2020, pre-COVID, correct?
Correct.
What type of impact are we seeing with not running that trolley right now? Or we haven't been running in the past year and a half or so?
Well, the trolley service is free, so it's financially, we don't see it, but the ridership that we're not experiencing will long-term impact our formula funding because the Silo Trolley does have significant ridership that, you know, that's how we get our funds from the, from the FTA. But again, the city has graciously funded that service for years, and we want to be able to look at alternative solutions so that maybe other projects can receive funding. And maybe we can look for some partnerships within the community or look at maybe charging a small fee for individuals to utilize that service. So we're just looking at alternative solutions at this time.
Awesome. So speaking of funding, I know that we have been blessed with some CARES money. You know, our transportation department has received some over the past couple of months. Do we foresee more coming our way with the new infrastructure bill that was just passed nationally?
Well, the FTA will, they will make an appropriation to each transit system and provide us direction as to how we can use that money. And they'll provide us a toolkit in order to write the grant to accept the money. So basically at this stage in the process, we haven't received an appropriated amount for Waco Transit System. But once we do, we'll bring it to council so that it can be accepted and we can move forward with that process. Generally, there's, there hasn't been in the past, a local match required for that federal funding. So that's been an ideal situation for us in transit, but we never know what direction, you know, the next stage of funding may require.
Okay. And as we move forward with the next steps, I think you mentioned this in your presentation, but we are taking into consideration, especially the new areas that are really growing within the core of our city and within the city limits, looking at those opportunities to maybe reroute some of our, our lines to make sure that we include some of those new developments or subdivisions that are popping up.
Yes, sir. The Fort Casey State, that's an area that's had some new development.
You read my mind.
And so we've also had some community organizations reach out to us, as well as some businesses that have, that are in the industrial district. And so we want to be able to provide those alternatives to council so that we're not just promoting the locally preferred alignment that may not meet the growing needs of Waco, of the Waco region at this time. But again, both projects would be ideal for transit, but we want to be fiduciary responsible for how we spend our funds. But we also want to make sure that it's the right path forward, you know, with the direction that we move transit.
Wonderful. Thinking, and the, the last question I have is, I know you put in here, public engagement and community engagement. What would that look like in your opinion?
Well, we did some virtual public engagement opportunities, but in the past, we've always had opportunities for the community to come in at, at different times. We also want to go out to the neighborhood association meetings so that they understand how the project can impact them. We want to engage social media. We want to look at whatever platforms are out there in order to promote the project so that people can provide, provide the feedback proactively. Because a lot of times you'll put things in place and then after it's been set and it's voted on and we're moving forward, then people say, you know, I, I needed this or I did, I needed that. So our hope is that we So our hope is that we continue to document the concerns that people have expressed to us recently and in the past about service delivery, and that we can provide that to the project team so that they, again, are not working from scratch, they're able to take that information and build from it.
Awesome. And I love that you said that not only having meetings, but maybe getting involved in the at the neighborhood level, at the neighborhood associations, which I think are a powerful tool, that we have a group of people in the same community or in the same neighborhood that are coming together, and they know the needs better of their neighborhood and community than anybody else. And so I think it's awesome that you're engaging them, even as some of us council members are starting to have town halls again. I think it would be phenomenal for you or your staff or your team to come and make that presentation during our town hall meetings again. So so I just want to make encourage, if possible, to make, no, not if possible, but encourage that these community engagements are also done bilingually. Make sure they're done in English and Spanish, so it could be a benefit for everyone in our community.
Yes, sir.
And thank you. And the last thing, I just want to commend you on the consultant. I did see that it's MWBE that's on the resolution today, and so congratulations on that, and the resolution has my full support, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sabina.
Thank you, Serena, for this presentation. One of the things that I am most, one of the things, many things I'm most proud of in with Waco Transit is that we are very much partnership focused, and our continued partnerships with our colleges and universities around town, with our school district and those things. You know, communication is my bag, right? And so as we go through the projects and all the things that we do, whether it be with BRT, with all the other things, because we offer the services that we do with our colleges and university partners, have we done like a how you ride the bus video?
We have one on our, yes, ma'am, we have one.
I want to see that more. And and I think that that's one of those things that if you're, just in the long run, as we try to encourage more people and we make it easier to move in a mass transit type of way, we're a car city, and you know, how, and I may be coming from a car city, but because I'm a new student or a transplant of the city who may be engaged and accustomed to mass transit, I want to make sure that we know how to ride the bus. And so it we that shouldn't be that hard, it shouldn't be hard to find. And I think that that's an opportunity to encourage more people to do so if they haven't, if they have exposure to it. So, you know, let's, this is a part of my whole get the mayor to have a whole TikTok channel initiative. But I think that those things, you know, so YouTube or Instagram or whatever, the to utilize the methods and mediums that would promote how to do something that we want to encourage people to do. You know, short videos, snippets, PSAs, go on the radio station, you know, we've got all of this access to information providers at our fingertips, and I think that that's something that we could do, you know? If I don't know how to do it, I'm not going to do it. And, you know, we are working to streamline our systems and make the process so much easier, and I don't know that the people know that we're, you know, working that hard for them. And I mean, we can say it all day long, but if it's, you know, jingly, or if, you know, Jim has his, you know, Back to Future outfit on, you know, I mean, people will remember that.
Let's do it.
You know?
Promotion.
You know, so I think that that's one of the ways that we can really just shine some more light on on how we're doing what we're doing. So both trolleys are down and have been down since the pandemic, not just the Silo District, but is downtown?
No, the South Shuttle, it's still running.
Okay. Wait.
The Silo one, yeah.
Okay, okay, cool. So the with that, once the, and this is just to throw it out there, let's see where it lands, with the creation of the multiple hotels at MLK and Elm, with the Bridge Street Plaza coming online, I think that that's one of the things that, you know, while it is a big part of that, to make sure that those those businesses are aware that this trolley is available, so is the folks, you know, I mean, yes, it's lovely to walk across the bridge to go to the convention center, but if it's raining and there's some options, I want to know about that. So let's find a way to make sure we incorporate and add Waco Transit first top of mind to the new businesses and establishments that are coming into that area and engage the people to utilize that more. Very well done, thank you.
I would like to second that motion for a mayor meek TikTok on how to ride a bus. Heck, I'd watch one on how to ride a bike, whatever he wants to do.
I don't even know what that is. Serena, thanks for this presentation. Couple comments. One is the priority of this council is to not only grow our economy, but grow our economy in a way that everyone can live financially secure lives, and one critical component to that is ensuring that we have great transportation and our residents have access to jobs. So, you know, you mentioned looking at some of the jobs coming into the industrial park and ensuring that our routes are coordinated around those jobs coming online. I just want to double down and encourage you to continue to do that and also work, as you've mentioned, with our community partners. There's been many nonprofits and community members and pastors who have reached out to me and saying, a priority of mine is making sure my folks can get these jobs that are paying well. So we're, we celebrate that we have better paying jobs coming to Waco, we just want to make sure that our people can get to them. And so this is a huge component of that, and I'm excited to take that step to make sure that we do that. The Silo Trolley on that, you know, so much of that was about making sure that our downtown businesses were able to have an optimized experience by the number of tourists we see coming to our downtown community and ensuring that downtown business, every downtown business was able to really benefit from the the foot traffic down here. And so I think that it's worth considering, you know, what a path forward is. I think, you know, maybe further look back on what the return on investment was. I think talking to some of those local businesses to really see, hey, did you, do you feel like when that trolley was here, you were you were feeling that foot traffic? And then I think as Councilmember Bearfield mentioned, really looking at, you know, it's funny how time changes, even in a pandemic, you know, there's new shops, restaurants, retail online since then, and maybe looking at those routes to make sure they're updated. But I think an exploration on what the return on investment to our local businesses was from that would be something I'd like to see, to just continue to explore how much that makes, does make sense. So great presentation. This is a really important discussion for our community and look forward to continuing to move forward. Thanks, Serena.
All right, Mayor and Council, our last work session we've got for you is Work Session 533, which does not have a presentation, but I am going to ask Paul and Nick to come up and sit at the table, and in the event you have questions related to the city manager's proposed fiscal year 2021, 2022 operating budget, as well as the discussions we've had about the American Rescue Plan. This is a, this is a time that we've allotted for you to provide us direction or ask questions on either one of those topics.
My hope is that you can pull up the slide with the hands and the colorful question marks. Prompting.
Thank you, Ashley, for knowing what he's talking about.
Presentation we've had. Let's finish the year outright.
With the calendar, the schedule.
That's right, there we go.
Well, she is on it today.
I love it.
Any questions for staff or comments?
I'll just start off, on the, just the budget in gen, budget in general, I just think you guys have done yeoman's work in pulling this together, and we continue to deliver premium city services with the police, the fire, the wastewater, the water, being very mindful of the rates on all this stuff as we go across the board in our city services, and we continue our streets improvement program, continuing to tackle that PCI. This is a great budget. It also has a tax rate cut, the first one in eight years, and I think it's important to this council that we are addressing that community request. This council is also very conscious of having a sustainable sales tax revenue and kind of predictable, and that's kind of coming back on board, and maybe it wasn't time to do a giant tax cut this year, but we think that we are, at least I think that we're preparing for nice revenue sources within sales tax, impact fees that we put in place this year. The revenues aren't quite as big, but I think in future years, we'll see more revenue coming from there, stormwater fees, same way. We did, and the stuff that Clint was showing us in the in the plan, these are big, big initiatives that we're putting in place, and I'm excited about what we're doing with the budget. The couple of questions I had just left over from last, the last time we brought up this little question, the question, the hands up in the air. We did reconcile that. I had a question on the property tax figure, which we, I think we reconciled, and I've got that all straight. The capital improvements, pages 300 to 469 in the budget, we had a great presentation within the budget and also a great presentation in our budget audit last week, which I really appreciate, having the different managers come in with with kind of an update on where we are in these capital improvements. I think it creates more visibility on these projects. One question, just two questions here. One of them is that the fee schedule at the end, did we, did we show delta or changes in the fees? Did we get that part? That was just a follow-up I was noticing from my last questions, and maybe you did it and I didn't see it. The change, the fee, the whole fee schedule, which is in there, but just highlighting which fees change year over year and?
We'll have that for your budget audit.
Okay, super. And then the last question I had was just the the stipend levels that we're talking about, and I just, I just want to be, I think it behooves us all to be totally transparent on what we're doing here. And I know that we started with trying to get peer city council standards and where they were, and we did circulate sort of a preliminary table on where we were there. I did some work on kind of filling out some of the blanks, because again, you, we qualified it as preliminary, and I get that. But just in the homework I was doing on it, in generally, in similar-sized cities with similar-sized budgets, general fund budgets, that stipend ranged from like $50 a month to $2,000 a month, and that's it. And so the average is sitting around 1,200 a month, and being in a percentile of 50 to 75, 1,200 to 1,600 a month, I think, was kind of where I think it looked maybe about right. And this is a tough one to talk about, because this, the council I'm with here right now is probably the hardest working council I've ever been associated, well, in the five years I've been, the oldest guy here on council. They're accessible 24/7, they are engaged, they are plugged in, and I've not seen a harder working council. So it seems weird that we're talking about, you know, pennies here in the overall budget, but I do want to be as transparent as possible as we as we layer this number in. And maybe we need a little more work on nailing that, the peer city study down, but just preliminarily, it looks like the 1,200 to 1,600 is, to me, is kind of the right number to be, which would be a little bit, it would be a little bit below what we're showing in the draft, the draft budget.
We certainly look at those benchmarks and review those and get back to the council with some, make sure that those are, that what you, what you'd like them to be.
I'd love to, Holmes and I are good yin and yang up here, just in general, but particularly on this item. I've had the pleasure of creating relationships with a number of council members all across the state of Texas, and while what Councilmember Holmes was saying is true of our peer cities, the large Texas cities, all of the large Texas cities are providing their council members somewhere between $60,000 to $80,000 a year with a full staff, with an office. And something that I think many of us share is we want to be the model city for both our size and what does mayor always say, the like smallest kid on the?
Of our city.
Of our city. So I'm hesitant to look at what our peer-sized cities are doing, because I don't think there is that commitment to aggressive equity along racial lines, class lines, gender lines in the same way that some of our big brother and big sister cities have. So that's, that's my counter of, we all give so much to this council, and we know that there are so many phenomenal leaders in each one of our districts that would do an incredible job serving up here, but they cannot access these seats because of the incredible demand of time that it takes to fill these roles. And if we want, the six of us hold so much privilege in so many different intersecting identities, and if we want our council to be more and more reflective of our constituents, we have to remove these massive economic barriers to entry that our current council poses. So I think the $25,000 is something that I am very much in support of. I've said this before, but I really think we should consider offering a full range of benefits, like a lot of our other Texas cities do. So many folks, if the average Wacoan, a Waco ISD teacher, a small business owner, someone that works in a restaurant, if they want to access these seats, they'll have to give up a full-time job in order to be here. So if we can offer those benefits, that's providing one other, we're removing one other barrier to entry. My other thought is, Nick, this might be a question for you. When do we anticipate, if it's not already, the participatory budget tool coming online? And then what is our comms plan to get that out to everybody and their mama so that way folks know how to engage with this?
So we're finishing up finalizing the tool, translating it into Spanish as well, so it's almost ready to go.
Okay.
And then as far as communication goes, we'll, you know, utilize all of our municipal resources to get the information out, as well as work with Mallett, the Neighborhood Associations, to get the information to them as well.
Oh, awesome. Will there be presentations at the Neighborhood Association meetings?
If they want us to do presentations, we are more than happy to go through and walk through the tool and provide that information to them.
Awesome, thanks.
Yeah, I, I hear where both of you are coming from, I think there's so many valid points there. I think that, you know, the tension we have is we want this to be a council that has competent working professionals, but not limited just to the independent wealthy. I think that really ensuring that the Waco citizen is going to get the best representative to bring the best return on investment to this community, both quantitatively and qualitatively, is the lens that I'm looking through for this. I, you know, from my vantage point, I hear where both of you are coming from. For me, I think that, you know, hearing Jim's in-depth research, it sounds like you did. For me, I would be okay with going at the high end of that bracket point, that like 1650 a month range. If that's the high end of that, seems like something that could be good consensus for this council and also a significant step forward. For me, what's important for me is also that maintaining that city management, city manager, managed city, where this council provides policy and, you know, sets the policy, interfaces with the community, sets the budget, which is an incredible amount of time to provide your representation to this community, particularly in light of the moment we're in of significant growth and significant opportunity to this community. But that's, that's a range I'd be comfortable, the kind of the mark that I think I've landed on to be comfortable with.
Paul, Nick, thank you so much for the presentation. I will have to say, I don't know if it's because this is my third time around, or I dedicate this time, or I, it's because of you guys, but this has been the easiest budget season for myself, so I do appreciate that. I do have a question. I brought it up in a previous council meeting and then at a budget and audit meeting, but I'd really want to see what we need to do to increase our economic development give by another $250,000. I truly believe that the return that we give, that we receive from WebMec in terms of tax and job creation and people that are being employed, that we represent, I think it is a smart and strategic investment on our end. So what do we need to do to get that, change the WebMec contribution from 250,000 to 500,000 this year?
Let us, let us look at that, I think it's certainly doable. And what I'd like to do, if this pleases the council, at the budget audit meeting, to bring you back some options, how we can do that. You know, there's a number of different ways on both the revenue expenditure side to maybe make that happen, so let's take a look at that, and on the, at the next meeting of the Budget and Audit Committee, we'll come back with some options of how we could do that.
Yeah, I really would like to explore that option as to what do we do to increase our? our, our share of WebMec from 3 million this year to 3.25 million this year. And so, if you would do me that favor, I would really appreciate it.
We'll bring you options of how we can do that.
Thank you.
Just really quickly, I'm, I'm, thank you all for the presentations and everything that have happened up to now. We have had a, I mean, as Mayor Protem Sabido said, it's probably one of the easier budget and audits and preparing of the annual budget that we've had. My question is, is we've, and I know you can't, you can't spend money that you don't But have we, where are we in, in, have we created buckets for what potentially could be infrastructure dollars? I mean, I know we don't know any idea what that is, but I mean, there are some things that certainly fit the, fit the profile that, you know, have we, have we put considerations to, well, if, have we done the if-then's of it all for any federal infrastructure dollars? Because I think that would affect, I mean, or, and/or would we just have to go in and amend the budget as we see it moving forward?
With regard to the American Rescue Plan funds, we do have some, some thoughts and ideas there, particularly with regard to the resiliency issues that were talked about earlier in the meeting. And so, I think there's some specific numbers we can give you inside of that one bucket that we, we put at 15 million of this 34 million. So, we can bring you back some information there. We expect that, that number to be between 10 and 12 million, just for the resiliency side of things on the, on the infrastructure side. With regard to the, the new bill, we haven't, we don't have anything for you yet on that. I think we're waiting to see exactly how those, those numbers shake out and what's eligible and what's not, but we will be coming back to you. We won't have to necessarily amend the budget because those are federal dollars, but certainly the, the plan for the use of those funds will have to be approved by the council.
Sure. And I guess if, if, if those dollars, would we take out what, you know, because there's things that are already budgeted for. So, we'd move those and then that money would go somewhere else, and we could do more things in theory.
Absolutely. We, you, you could. And it may, certain things may be able to be funded through the federal dollars and some may be local. And so, because we do our bond sale in, usually in February or March, we have some time, we, even though we'll come forward with the CIP in late September and counsel amend the budget with our CIP plan, we don't, we're not locked into that until we get to the sale in February. So, there's still some time if the federal programs become more clear on the use of those funds, we can certainly change and call an audible and go a different direction locally if we need to.
Awesome. Thank you. And just briefly regarding our discussion of what our stipend looks like, I under, I do understand, Councilmember Holmes, your concerns. One of the things that, that we have the ability to do right now is to not handicap anyone who comes after us. I think that whether it be foresight or not, that we are one of the few cities that don't have to make legislative changes to do this. But what we can do is adjust as we grow. I mentioned in budget and audit, you say peer cities, and it really depends on what you're talking about specifically, because there is no city like Waco. And we are on a trajectory that I don't know that any of us would have imagined. You know, Hector and I sit in the privilege of, of being natives. And in the, in the times that we were children growing and seeing where we are now, it's not, not, not anything that is, you know, but unbelievable, but somewhat unbelievable. I mean, it has happened in a way that, that we didn't imagine. And I mean, Waco has always been at the precipice of greatness, and now we are really knocking down that domino. What I don't want to do is put us in a box. I know that we, we who sit at this dais have the ability to work with people who are really understanding of the many, many meetings or many outside things that we have to do in addition to our jobs, and we're grateful, but you know, we run a risk every day. And so, I think that it's important that we all realize, and I know even when someone I was talking to, somebody on a stoop, and they were like, you know, well, y'all make good money, right? And I said, well, this is a volunteer council, and I had to explain what that meant. And I think that it's not like, there are cities who, this is a full-time job with full-time staff and all the things. And, you know, are we there yet? No. Will we be there? Probably. Probably within our lifetime. So, what I don't want to do is handcuff anybody who's coming after me, because no, I won't be sitting here. But I don't want to make it impossible for the person who is replacing me to, to think twice about filling this seat. And I know each of you feel that way, because I think it's imperative that we prepare. Our succession planning is the way we keep our city moving and growing. You know, we can't, we can't make Nick have question mark slides if we don't continue to move this thing. And so, I think that, I believe there's an answer and there's a number that will work for us. And it's not anything that would, would cause a issue or a hindrance in our budget. But I think that, that we do, it is, it does need to be recognized, the amount of work that happens behind this veil. And I don't want anybody thinking about stepping into public service to hesitate for a moment because, ah, I gotta work, because this work can't stop. And so, we will, we'll adjust and move on. But I thank you, Paul, for working and providing the information and staff as well of what other cities are doing as far as their compensation packages. I mean, it, it, as Councilmember Palmer mentioned, the folks all over the state, all over the country, you work with NLC, and you're like, y'all, what? What, what do you do? And how, how do y'all do that? But I think that for us in this growing state, in this evolving state, that we, we, we should, we'll reach a number. And I, I agree that with what our city manager has put forward, and I appreciate the thought that he, the time that it took for him to take that into consideration.
Can I ask city staff for y'all to consider giving us some sort of a metric that could change year to year? Like, I know the city of El Paso, when they were trying to decide how their council is going to be compensated, they created a citizen group, and what that group decided upon was that their council members would be paid what a family of four would make under HUD guidelines. So, I'd love some sort of metric that, I don't want us, I don't want the next council in 2027 to say like, wow, that number that the council decided on in 2021 is really preventing us from moving forward. Like, that was equitable maybe then, it's certainly not equitable now. So, having some sort of a number or a metric in place that that number is slightly adjusted on a year-to-year basis.
I would say on the, you know, the manager, the manager's budget has $25,000 a year in it. It doesn't necessarily currently contemplate a change like that, and not to punt that consideration back to the council, but I, I would just ask for your guidance. If that's, if that's the will of the council, the number, as well as the annual review of that, that's ultimately the council's consideration.
I'd like to, first of all, echo Mayor Protem's comments about increasing the contribution to WebMec, and so, I fully support his number there. So, I just want to be on record fat. I look forward to the budget and audit session. I apologize about missing the last one due to a vacation week there. But yeah, in terms of the stipend, I, you know, I, I think we commented a little bit about this on the work session before. I, I do affirm the council manager form of government and that, you know, the city manager's office runs the city. We serve a policy advisory role and a representative role from, for our various districts, that this is volunteer work, but also that the nature of this work has changed in the last 10 years. So, I do think a upward adjustment to the monthly stipend would be appropriate. I, I think I discussed a range of, you know, a trebling to a quadrupling. I think given, trust my council member, Holmes', statistical analysis of similarly sized, I like looking at similarly sized peer cities. And so, I think kind of somewhere along the lines of a, of a trebling of the rate seems correct, and that's kind of on his upward range of the normal. So, that's, that's somewhere around where, what I would support on this. Thank you.
Yeah, I guess Bradley, if you're looking for guidance, I'm subject to getting these numbers finalized on peer cities, because anytime, you know, in my experience, you try to figure out what you, what somebody should be paid, you go look at the very objective set of data and check benchmarks and see what other people are getting paid. So, I'm, I think the data's there. And I agree with Mayor's observation that if we're willing to use average to, I think it gets into the 60th percent, 65th percentile, whatever the 1650 is talking about per month, I think, I think that is appropriate going, again, we were all elected with the $500 a month, and it just, there's something about my Midwestern nature that says, if I'm in charge of raising my own salary, I want to make sure the voter, the guy who's voting for me knows. And that's why I want to be 100% transparent. This number is in the middle, middle to what peer cities are telling us. They are, so that's where I think we should be.
Another discussion on this?
Are you getting the feedback in? You're, he's still not know the numbers to put, to put in there. I don't know.
I think, I mean, I'm, I'm hearing some consensus. I think what I'd do is maybe on the 24th, budget and audit, bring you back a discussion. And, and I know city attorney and I are talking about, you know, it's adopted, the, the current council stipend is adopted by resolution. Of course, it has to be budgeted in the budget, but it's adopted by a resolution. I think the last one was in 2016. So, we're going to talk through like the, the steps behind bringing forth a, a resolution for an actual vote. And potentially that happens in September alongside the budget, but I would like to discuss it again at the 24th and see if I'm understanding where consensus lies.
Sounds like there's a spectrum.
There's a spectrum. Yeah, there's a spectrum. We'll see how close I can get us nailed down to it. So, I, I think we're dialing in here is what it feels like. So, I appreciate that feedback.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bradley. Bradley, is that in our work sessions? One thing I failed to do earlier was on the consent agenda, see if there were any consent agenda items that council wanted to pull from the consent agenda. If none, the consent agenda will include resolutions 2021, 535 through 20, resolution 2021, 552. And with that, I'll ask if there are any future agenda items.
Mayor Meek, I do have one. I know it's kind of early to think about it, but I'm always a firm believer in planning ahead, and I know it's going to sound weird since we're in August, but I think it's time to start looking at options and plans for Waco Wonderland, what that will look like. I know, I am known to bring this up every August. But I, but I figured, you know, might as well get it on the books and on record. So, if we can get a follow-up, what the plans are this year, I know last year, obviously, we had a pivot and change because of COVID. It appears that while some things are getting better, we still have to be very cautious of COVID, and so, I just wouldn't see that, make sure that we're thinking strategically and what that's going to look like. So, if I can get a follow-up report on that, that would be wonderful.
Sounds good.
Mayor and council, I don't know if you can hear me, I think it's on, but Resolution 539 and 540 would have to be pulled from the consent agenda. Councilmember Boarder root and Palmer have filed affidavits substantial interest on that item, so those would be removed from consent.
Thanks, Esmeralda. Any other future agenda items? We will recess now to executive session. Sorry, we will recess the work session, reconvene regular session for executive session, as read into the record by the city secretary at 4:20 PM.
Notice is hereby given, the city council will go into executive session in accordance with the following provisions. One, real property, Texas Open Meetings Act, section 551.072. Two, economic development, Texas Open Meetings Act, section 551.087. And three, personnel, Texas Open Meetings Act, section 551.074. A, city secretary, Esmeralda Hudson, and D, and B, discussion of city secretary hiring process. We are now in executive session at 4:20 PM.